It is 6:30 and I called a November 8, 2022 regular meeting to Franklin County Plan Commission meeting to order. Before we get into the meeting, I will turn things over to the staff to discuss the meeting format.
Tonight's meeting will be conducted through a hybrid in-person slash online meeting platform. If you wish to comment or need clarification on public item, please send us an email at plan inquiry@frank county dot gov before the public comment period closes. Once public comment period has closed, said item, comments will not be included as part of discussion. Those in attendance, please remember to speak into the microphone when addressing staff or public comments slash testimonies.
Will planning staff please call roll and announce whether or not we have a quorum?
Mike Crowley?
Here.
Mike Vincent?
Here.
Layden Lowe?
Here.
Melinda Didier?
Here, excuse me.
Peter Harpster?
Here.
Manny Gutierrez?
Stacy Knighton?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Will staff in attendance please introduce yourselves?
I'm Derek Broton, Director of Planning and Building for Franklin County.
Ryan Nelson, Planner One.
Aaron Gunderson, Planner One.
Okay, I will now lead us in a Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Knighton and seconded by Commissioner Lowe. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. It is now time for the public hearing portion of our meeting. Good evening and welcome. I will turn things briefly over to our staff host who will go over the ground rules for tonight's meeting.
Here are the ground rules for tonight's hybrid hearing. In-person public testimony divide two groups, for and against slash neutral. They'll be called upon to speak during their allotted in-person public testimony section, giving their name for the audio record and position on proposal. Call-in public testimony called upon individually during the call-in public testimony portion of the hearing, given a name for the audio record as well as if they're in favor, neutral, or against proposal. As a reminder, please mute audio when not speaking. Email comments received during the public hearing will be read into the record by staff after the call-in public testimony section of the hearing. All questions, comments, and questions shall be addressed to the Plan Commission and should be relevant to the application and not be of a personal nature. Each speaker shall have five minutes to provide testimony and shall speak into the microphone. Please avoid repetitive comments. If there are a large number of speakers or part of a group or organization, please select a representative to speak on behalf of the group. Behavior such as clapping, booing, hissing, or remarks is prohibited. Every citizen here tonight should have the opportunity to testify without such distractions.
Are there any questions regarding the public hearing ground rules?
How do I make that go?
What's going on? Turning for a moment to our commission members, let us keep in mind that we are prohibited by law from communicating with members of the public on this subject matter of these hearings except in these hearings. We also may not participate in a discussion in which there is an appearance of conflict of interest to the average person. So let us take a minute to consider as to the matters which are before us for this hearing today. Whether we had any ex parte communications, whether we have any ownership interest in the properties, whether we have any business dealings with proponents or opponents of the matters, or whether we have had business associates or immediate family who may either benefit or harm, be harmed by a decision in these matters. Are there any commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on this agenda?
I guess I'll go first. I know the petitioner. I will not recuse myself though. I don't have any business dealings on this matter.
Okay. Also, I know the applicant as a friend, and I have done a little business with him, and I will not recuse myself unless there is a conflict in the audience. Objection. Yeah. Anybody else? Let the record show that there were two declarations but no objections. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show there were no objections. The order of the hearing will, shall be as follows. Planning staff shall provide a staff report. The commission may ask questions of the staff. The applicant or applicant's representatives will have a presentation. In-person public testimony for or against or neutral for the project. Call-in public testimony for, against, neutral regarding the project. Email public testimony for, against, or neutral of the project. Final staff comments. Clarification of public statements that occurred during the testimony portion of the public hearing. Then we will close the public hearing and planning commission discussion of the proposed action. Are there any procedural questions before we begin the hearing? Okay, item one. Item one is the public hearing for file CUP 2022-4 SEPA 2022-16. It's a proposal to expand an existing feedlot to include upwards of 10,000 head of cattle. The area where the project is proposed has a zoning designation of agricultural production, AP 20. The area has a comprehensive plan, land use designation of agriculture. Features of the proposal will include corrals, commodity shed, office, break room, and scale house. I declare the public hearing for CUP 2022-4 SEPA 2022-16 open at 6:37. May we have staff present the staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair. As mentioned, this is a conditional use for 6D ranches. The property doesn't have an assigned address to it, but it comprises three parcels. Parcel numbers 109470049, 109470011, and 190, sure that's not 109? Yeah, so that's 10947039. I know this because 190 would be somewhere else in the county, not in that area. So that is a typo on the last one. It's 10947039. Zoning for the properties as mentioned is agricultural production 20. Comp plan designation is agricultural, and the property size is approximately 319.06 acres. It's located northeast of Paradise Road, east of Moon Road, south of Coyenne Road, southwest of Muse Road, and west of US Highway 395. The request is to allow for the expansion of an existing feedlot for upwards of 10,000 head of cattle. Approximately 292 acres of the aforementioned acreage will be used, and the site plan shows an office, corrals, commodity shed, buried power lines, and well locations. So, then what a portion of that one. Oh, there it is. Okay, yeah, that's there. That one's, that parcel there, it goes like this. This, most of that circle is a different parcel. I just propose site plan, corrals. These are the, as you saw on the last slide, there's some other structures there. Got quite a few pictures because we're talking about a large area. There's three or four slides of pictures. So this is the area. To honor about June 30, 2022, staff sent notices to technical agency property owners within one mile. Due to the fact that this hearing was originally set for, I believe, August, we re-noticed on October 27. on October 27th to notify the public of tonight's meeting and we re-noticed in the, the Franklin County graphic also on the 27th. Site's been posted, which you saw in the last picture, pending land use action sign and it was entered into the SEPA registry as SEPA number 202, 203, 274. We received comments from the US Bureau of Reclamation, Franklin County Public Works, Benton Franklin Health District, who made, and Department of Ecology, both who made, this is in the original comment period, they made SEPA specific comments primarily with regard to the new, the CAFO, Neutral Management Plan. Yeah. There's more slides that'll get into that, but we received one public comment that was in opposition to the proposal. We also received comment from six. This is in support of, and it's from the cattle feeders, cattle feeders association. The, so there's two kind of comment periods. You have the SEPA, that's at the beginning and, you know, we take comments all the way up until tonight at the hearing. So hence, that is a valid comment. Copy of that was provided to the planning commission via email yesterday, wasn't it? And then hard copies were provided to them this evening. So the application for this proposal was submitted to staff on May 27th with the planning commission meeting set for August 2nd. Benton Franklin Health District and Washington Department of Ecology voiced their objection to the proposal during the agency public comment period on July 13th, 2022. Their objections were based on the incompleteness of the application along with concern about nitrate levels in the project area. Both agencies requested more information. Oops. Washington Department of Ecology requested nutrient management plan before final comment. Benton Franklin Health District requested an environmental impact statement. Staff directed the applicant to resolve the concerns by both agencies before continuing to process the application. So hence the delay to today. On September 29th, a draft plan, nutrient management plan was submitted to staff, Department of Ecology and Benton Franklin Health District. Based on this, we determined the application could proceed as the county in this process is, the conditional use permit process involves effectively granting permission to proceed or denying permission to proceed. It, but it doesn't necessarily get into all the little nuances and every element of a, of a operation. Those are actually, for example, the things that are covered by the state, that's under the state's purview and, and so conditions may reflect that. They may, you know, must abide by this agency's comments or this agency's requirements. And that's just regardless of what this recommendation or this hearing does, it's, it's about permission to proceed. It doesn't necessarily, we don't review every nuance of the application because a lot of those elements are outside of our purview. We have the Conservation District that's involved. We have the Department of Ecology. We have the Department of Ag, I think, is involved in it as well. And, and those are the agencies that will monitor to determine whether or not the applicant, should this be approved, is abiding by the requirements under state law. So, last we had heard is that the applicant is still finalizing the nutrient management plan. It's not unusual. Fly and odor control plan, those types of things are often not necessarily finalized at this stage in the application process. So based on those things, we felt it was okay to start moving this forward again, at least to the hearing. Staff received one public comment on July 14th in opposition to the proposal. Comments or stated they had concerns about the vagueness of the applicant's answers containing the proposal and SEPA checklist. There also appears to be some confusion regarding the 1,000 permitted head limits such that comments submitted stated there was no provision through permitted or conditional use to go over set amount. So, under Franklin County code, the landowner provided the properties large enough to accommodate the animal unit counts and some other, you know, has the environment, you know, you can have up to 1,000 head permitted as right. So in this case, three properties could theoretically have up to 3,000 head on the property before needing to apply for an application or a conditional use permit. However, Franklin County Code 17.1002OB5 states all the above mentioned head count numbers may be exceeded upon the approval of a conditional and/or special use permit with the exception of the dairy separation standard listed in subsection B1A of this section. That, the dairy separation and exception from that would be granted not by Franklin County but by the Conservation District and would not necessarily apply here because this is a dairy, dairy separation situation. It's a feedlot, which dairies have a 500 head count limit. Feedlots have a thousand head count limit before requiring a conditional use permit. Franklin County Code does not prescribe a maximum head count that can be applied for. Each CUP is reviewed and processed based on the specifics of the application. Some territory, the property just isn't going to be adequate to necessarily support it. Other ones, it could go even bigger. It's all a matter of the specific environment that we're dealing with. That's why Franklin County Code doesn't necessarily say you shall not ever exceed no matter what the circumstance. It doesn't say a maximum. Each conditional use is reviewed based on the land area and agency comments and, and public impact. Franklin County Public Works comments, pretty standard. Approach permit is required to access Franklin County roads. Any utility extensions crossing Franklin County roads will be addressed at the time of application and no waste from operations shall be allowed onto county right of way. Following agencies provided comment and comments were provided in the planning commission members packets, Benton Franklin Health District, US Bureau of Reclamation, Washington Department of Ecology. Agencies that were notified and provided no comment, Big Ben Electric, Franklin County Conservation, Department of Historic Archaeology, Archaeology and Preservation, Confederate Tribes of Colville and Yakima Nation, South Columbia Basin Irrigation District and Franklin County Fire District One, Assessor's Office and E911. Proposed, so the recommended findings of fact out of the proposed use in the AP 20 is in accordance with the goals and policies of county development regulations and the applicable comprehensive plan. It will not adversely affect public infrastructure. It will be constructed, maintained, operated to be in harmony with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity. That is going to, that would be a joint thing for Franklin County code. You know, my department or other departments within the county maybe are, are the people that would enforce those regulations. The state regulations would be by the state regulators or agencies and then also, like I said, you've got the Conference Conservation District as well as Benton Franklin Health District that also have approvals that they will have to grant to this facility and they will also be policing certain aspects and elements of the, of the activities. Location and height of the structure, well, there's not really too much structures, but, and site design will not discourage the development of permitted uses on property in the general vicinity or impair the value thereof. This is out, way out there, so it's, it's the country. Proposal will not be more objectionable nearby properties by reason of noise, fumes, vibration, dust, traffic or flashing lights than would be the operation of any permitted uses in the district. And the proposal will not endanger the public health, safety or general welfare if located where proposed. All of these findings of fact also do assume that we don't often mention it, that with certain and specified conditions mitigating any, like for example in number five, there's probably going to be, I don't know, well, maybe not, maybe fumes, I don't know. There may be disturbances, but there are things that can be done or required of the applicant in order to ensure that that, that disturbance is minimized and those, those are the conditions. And these are the conditions that we have. The agencies such as the Department of Ecology and Benton Franklin also have, may have conditions or requirement that are up to the applicant to maintain or abide by and that, that enforcement is between them and those agencies. But comply with the Washington State Department of Ecology's and Benton Franklin Health District applicable permit requirements, including air and water quality standards, establish and comply with an odor and control plan consistent with Franklin County Resolution Number 2001-238 to be approved by the Franklin Conservation District. We're doing what we call an inadvertent discovery protocol with regard to archaeological and historic things, you know, so if archaeological or human remains be, are observed during project activities, they need to stop all the activity, contact the archaeological and historic preservation department. They need to contact us to let us know as well and affected tribes. They find that they believe to be human bones and also the coroner would be involved. The applicant is required to comply with the requirements of the county building division regarding any new construction on site. On-site water for fire protection may be required upon completion of building department review of submittals and consultation with local fire district in accordance with international fire code. And approach permit is required for access to Franklin County roads. Any utility extension crossing Franklin County roads will be addressed at time of application. And I have a suggested motion, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Does any commissioner have any questions of staff?
I have a few questions and they're mostly based on my confusion about your mitigated determination of nonsignificance for the SEPA. And also, I, I would like you to, to define what upwards of 10,000 means.
It means no more than 10,000, but it could be less.
Okay. So is, is there, I mean, an opportunity to put language in there in the conditional use permit that says exactly that, maximum of 10,000 instead of upwards of 10? That just seems sort of loosey goosey to me. That's just a question.
Yeah, we can, we can change that.
Okay. Also, there was, there was the timing. Have you, do you know when you might be receiving that, those final comments from the agencies that were asking for more information?
I wouldn't know until, they're still working on that and they are in coordination with those agencies. Again, we're, we're stating permission to proceed, but just even if it's approved, just because we grant permission to proceed doesn't necessarily mean they will or they will not be able to make those arrangements with those agencies. That's between them and the agencies that are responsible for those aspects of their application.
So what happens to the application at that point then if that happens to be the case?
What do you mean?
They can't come to an agreement, for example.
And it becomes null because they can't, then they're not permitted to proceed beyond their, their permitted amount of cattle on the property.
My other question was, did you ever receive or, or require the EIS to be done that was requested?
No, because this does not, these types of applications have never triggered an EIS in Franklin County that I've ever seen. An EIS is a pretty substantial thing. This is a cattle feedlot, so they asked it, however, talking with the health department and the applicant, they got together and they've, the health department does not at this point think that an EIS is necessary. Because there was some misunderstanding as to what was going on and those things were cleared up for them.
So did you receive any, did you receive that in writing where that would be part of the, the final record where that they came to that agreement?
No, I had a conversation with them.
The health department is here.
The health department is here. They'll let them speak to it.
Okay.
Yeah, so, like I said before, an EIS I've never seen in, in the, in the record that we've ever required an EIS for somebody doing a feedlot. It's, that's a pretty substantial environmental lift.
Thank you. Let me just do a double check through here.
Any more commissioner questions? Does the applicant or applicant's representative wish to speak? Sit your name, address.
All right. I'm the applicant, Rob Davis of 6D Ranches. I live in Conell, Washington, 61 Welch Road. I operate a, a row crop farm in Franklin County where we grow potatoes, wheat, corn, hay, some carrot seed, beans. Also operate a cattle trucking company on the, primarily the west coast from Washington, Oregon, Idaho, Nevada, California, you know, Texas, back to Kansas. 6D Ranches would be our, our newest venture in applying for this conditional use permit, which would be, you know, up to 10,000 head grow lot for feeder cattle. The feeder cattle, cabs would come into the grow lot roughly five to 600 pounds. We'd feed them up to about 900 pounds at which they would then leave our facility and go to a finish yard to get grown to a larger size, fattened, ready for kill. Some of the cabs would be local, some, but most of them would actually come from out of state to be transported here to Columbia Basin, to Franklin County to be fed here locally. Most of the feed used would be sourced within a 50-mile radius, keeping local, supporting local farmers. The vitamins, minerals, medical supplies, vaccinations, all sourced from a representative right in Franklin County. The majority of the equipment, all of the fuel, tires, as many parts as possible, all local. Important to support our local community. Coming from Conell, I can, I can use our small little Napa store and our Conell grain supply that struggle on an annual basis to stay afloat, so both of those entities would be utilized in, in maintenance and repairs. Building materials, construction contractors, local if available. We'd be looking at, at full capacity, providing somewhere in 15 to 17 full-time positions and seasonally an additional six to eight folks on the payroll. We would estimate that 6D Ranches would contribute an estimated $16 million to the Franklin County. County economy at the current market rate, with close to 1 million going to employee wages. This project has a potential to be a great asset to our county and its economy. There's a few things that, from the application, that needed clarified or addressed. The Department of Ecology needed clarification on the nutrient management plan and some engineering of the stormwater containment system. We've addressed these concerns with Ecology, and they are, they are pleased enough to continue to move the project forward. Benton Franklin Health Department needed clarification on our nutrient management plan, as well as a well-nitrate plan. We've addressed these concerns and received positive feedback from the Health Department on both issues to move forward. The Franklin County Road Department had concerns of an entrance from Coyon Road. A specialist from the County Road Department came out and met with a member of our team to go over the placement of the entrance exit area and explain how they would like it constructed. The work has been performed to the satisfaction of the Road Department. So we've had concerns from a few neighbors. We've had a team member that has had conversations regarding these concerns. Most of them are already addressed in our plans, but we would also like to work hard to address these concerns that are not spelled out in our plan moving forward with our neighbors. We have a team of professionals that have come together to create a solid plan. We've got many great folks within our agricultural production companies. Most of them live here and are raising children here, and those children attend our schools. They support many of our local businesses. Many of them have become or are looking to become homeowners in our community. This makes us happy to create an environment where our team members and their families can thrive and excel. My wife, Randy, and I were both raised in Franklin County. We've both lived here all our lives. Our parents lived here. They all attended Conell High School. All of our grandparents lived in Conell also. It was an easy decision to raise our four boys here. From the annual livestock show to the Basin City rodeo and school sports, we are involved. One example I could give you is a year ago, Conell High School was unable to have a homecoming and a prom due to COVID restrictions at the school. My wife, Randy, with help from others in the community, organized these two events and put them on in the shop at our house. It was great to see these kids be able to have a great time and not miss out on lifelong experience like homecoming or the prom due to COVID. We've also donated semis to the Conell High School CDL program. In our 6D Trucking Company, we have a safety and compliance consultant that comes to us from Idaho once a month, and we donated his time to go to the CDL program for a day and give his, his knowledge of way masters, the rules, the laws, the regulations, and what kind of opportunities can come along with becoming a CDL truck driver. I hope that you can see that we don't just do business here. Our family is involved in our community, and we care because this is our home. We want what's best for Franklin County. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Now we will go to the public testimony. We will have testimony for, against, and then neutral. Just raise your hand, is there any testimony for this project? Go ahead. Name, address, and then?
Bill Munson, Kennewick, Washington. I'm a, I'm a third-generation cattle feeder family. Been born and raised in the Akma Valley, fed cattle my whole life. Just want to talk about the importance of, of a grow yard. We buy a lot of our cattle at auction yards and from ranchers, and we buy them from 400 to 500 pounds, and it's really important for us to, you know, take them up to 800 to 900 pounds to take them onto the finish yards. It's really, it's kind of hard for us to go out and compete against the big guys and buy in big eight, nine-weight cattle to take them to the feedlots. So we buy a lot of rancher cattle and auction yard cattle, and we take them to feedlots like Rob Davis's that he's doing. We're a customer, and we just feel it's real important to have more grow yards in the area. It's, seems to be hard to find pin space right now. A lot of these feedlots are full of cattle, so we need, we need another grow yard like Rob's. So I'm a big supporter of it, and like I said, third gen, third-generation cattle family. I have the next generation coming up. They all want to feed cattle, so we're real supportive of what Rob's doing.
Greg William Brandtars, live out at 68 Flat Top Road in Burbank. As most of you know, I spent 30 years buying fat cattle for the IBP in Tyson Plant, did five years at Robbo Bank, and currently work for a risk management firm out of Chicago. The interesting part of, of the Northwest is we're a spring calving situation. Cattle that come into this plant at Tyson, IBP, come from seven states and two provinces. As opposed to Nebraska, Kansas, and Texas, that draws cattle from four different directions and three different calving opportunities, we're very limited here. Calf comes off cow weighing 300, 400, 500, has to go to a grow yard in order to make it weigh 800 before it goes to a finishing yard. 800 pound in a finishing yard takes about 150 days to finish, so it's pretty simple to say that you've got 2.1 times you can turn that big yard. So these grow yards are very essential to bring that animal up to that next level. The opportunity to feed these plants is tremendous. At the time, and I'm not sure today, but at the time, there were 1,200 to 1,400 people working at the Tyson Plant, which is on the edge of Franklin County. The lion's share of those people lived in Franklin County, and that's where their days and their money was spent. So the opportunity here is essential. For any opportunity to grow capitalism, to provide opportunity for the next generation, it's very important that projects like this get the opportunity to go through.
Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Cameron Jinks, and I'm, I live at 2543 Range View Road in Othello, Washington. I myself am here on behalf of, I'm a young cattle, I consider myself, I guess, young still a little bit. According to when I go to the sale yards, I feel like I'm pretty young, and I, I just think it's really important that our, our community supports this. As a cattle rancher, I run 300 head of mama cows, and I've had the opportunity to market them with, with 6D Ranches the last two years through Beef Northwest, and it's, it's, it's just a good process because they, you know, as a small guy, sometimes it's a little difficult, and, and I just feel that this is, this is really important. As they contact me, their representative comes to me and makes an offer on my cattle, and I'm just pretty appreciative of that. Also, I'm just really happy that my kids will have an opportunity possibly to, to work at a, at a place like that in the near future as they get older, and I think it's a huge benefit to our community. Also, just wanted to address, as the Vice President of the Conell Junior Eagle Football Program, Robin Randy and 6D Ranches donated forehead of fat steers this last year. We were in strong need of $25,000 for our, for our new helmets that were mandatory for safety reasons, and they donated approximately $16,000 of that $25,000 that we needed, so we were able to accomplish that task, and our kids are, had a great year this year playing football, and I'm very appreciative to them, and, and I think this will be a great thing for our community.
My name is Polito Sanchez. I'm here because I'm, worked for Rob Davis for 17 years, and he helped me a lot, so that's why I'm here. He helped me to give my CDL class, and he paid me for everything. Text attends to him, I got my own job, and I'm still here with him. So my family are growing up in Conell, I'm growing up in Conell, and I worked for Rob for 17 years. Thanks to him, I got a job. He helped me a lot all the time, is what I want to say.
David Hagith from Everson, Washington. I was called in, asked to write the nutrient management plan for the, for the site. We've, we've done that, we've had two drafts before Department of Ecology. The second draft had only three comments that we had to address. Two of them were engineering concerns that have been cleaned up, and the final one was how mortalities were going to be dealt with, and that's been cleared up, and we'll be following the, the state WAC. I've written in 20 years over 150 farm plans, and these are just the starting block for, for an operation, and it was quite clear that the team here had determined to adapt as needs be to make sure they're not the black sheep in the neighborhood. There was a statement up on the, on the board earlier about concerns from Health Department about nitrates in the area. From what I can tell, that's nitrates generally in the, in the watershed rather than on that specific site, because site tests taken on the site have shown they're well below 10 parts per million. So yeah, I fully recommend and endorse the application.
Okay, seeing no more positive, are there any comments against the project?
I'm Raimi Droux, 701 Muse Road. I live within three-quarters of mile of this facility. Started as a, a growlot that was, fences were going to come down, the ground was going to be farmed, and it's quickly turned into a facility that is probably out of compliance at this point with so many, too many cattle there. It's become a safety issue with the traffic on the roads. They did not have enough water at this facility, so they were hauling water to this facility. The approach that they're using, doesn't lend itself very well for traffic safety because their traffic wants to exit and go west, and they come at an angle, and they don't see the traffic coming to the right. Some of these things could be mitigated. I don't think what they've currently done is enough. Until probably in the last 60 days, there was no gravel on their lot road, so anytime they left there with a tractor or a feed truck, it tracked onto the road that we're trying to use also. We farm there. We own property on two sides of this thing. What we've seen by this operation is they don't do anything unless they have to, and I'm concerned that once a permit is issued, is the county going to be prepared to keep this operation to what they're agreeing to? My other concern is, at the number they want cattle there, the amount of feed and traffic, there's no all-weather county road that leads to this facility, so we're going to have a, a long-term burden on winter, on county roads that are not capable of handling that much. I understand that code will allow livestock production to get feed, fuel, whatever they need to keep an operation going. Those of us who are grain farmers, if we need to sell wheat and the load restrictions are on, or we need fertilizer, we, we don't get a, we don't get to use those roads, but the livestock guys will be able to use those roads, and I'm just concerned of, is if the county permits this facility at its size, are they prepared for the long-term damage to roads? Because this stated by them is, maybe has less cattle in the summertime, it's a winter operation when our roads are at their most vulnerable. The dust control aspect of this seems a bit vague. I don't think that anybody is requiring them to put sprinklers in these pins. You, I'm no genius, but I don't think you're going to run enough water trucks through a bunch of feed pins to keep the dust down. We live in a seven-to-nine inch rainfall. Rain pretty much stops by mid-May. Those pins are going to be dusty, and if you're going to allow this facility, you need to make sure that they are prepared and have enough water available to have dust control. Currently, I just don't think they have the capacity to do that. Some of you know me. I'm no stranger to cattle. I grew up on a wheat and cattle ranch in Franklin County. I've lived in Franklin County my whole life. I lived within 50 yards of a feedlot. We grew, we background our own cattle, we prob, you know, it was a 500-head growlot, so no stranger to the smells and the work and all that goes with that, but also, I understand there's a need for this type of facility, and if there's any way that we can accomplish that, but this number's pretty big. This 10,000 head on that piece of property in that location is large. And just if there's any way to limit that number, that would, that would be great, or current county use of 1,000 head per parcel is a pretty good number. Thank you.
Anyone else for negative testimony?
Hi, my name is Jacob Hinden. I live at 2970 Beulah Road in Conell. My house and my farm shop is about two and a half miles west of the proposed feedlot. My family owns farmland within a mile of the proposed expansion. This kind of hurts to say I'm against this. I love a good steak as much as anybody, but, and I don't, and I don't even necessarily say that I, that I am against it. I'm pretty indifferent to the existence of this feedlot being my distance away. I'm not going to be affected by it, like my other neighbors downwind of it who will inevitably, you know, deal with smell and flies and dust. But this feedlot has found its way to affect me in its, in its current existence due to an, an additional, just a pretty substantial increase of traffic. At this intersection here, they're both Paradise Road and Beulah Road are both gravel roads, and I live, I didn't place the house there, but I live about 100 feet off the road, and I've oiled the section in front of my house for the past couple of years, and the, the traffic has just increased substantially. They're otherwise quiet roads, and, and I am concerned about the speed and the safety these, and I've tried working with the applicant on this deal, and I think we've made some progress, but I think the county could do more in this area to help in, you know, keep the public safer on these, on these two road, this intersection in particular. You know, I've had a hand, a handful of interactions on this road. Last- of interactions on this road. Last winter, I was turning left, I was going north on Beulah Road, turning left to head west on Paradise. Paradise is a two-way stop. And I just had a little bit of intuition to look to my right, just for my own safety. And it was one of the, one of these sixty trucks hauling feed. And if I didn't look, I'm not sure if I would be standing here today. I would have been T-boned, and the truck flew by and blew the stop sign. And the power pole at my house was taken out earlier this year due to the traffic. My wife was ran off the road this summer. I had to pull her out of a potato field, by one of these trucks, you know, I don't, and it's just been, it's just, you know, it's just the matter of fact with the amount of traffic that's going through there now. I am going to oil the road next year just for dust purposes, so I can enjoy a barbecue in my backyard again. I'm going to, I'm going to oil that road a quarter mile every direction from the intersection. It's going to cost me about $5,000 a year. I've just accepted that. But one thing I think the county could add to this deal is, is to add a thirty-five-mile-an-hour zone, four-way stops, four-way stop there, or thirty-five mile-an-hour zone both ways. You know, I'm really open to anything to help mitigate the speed through this deal. I don't think I'm going to do anything to affect the traffic. They have to haul feed this direction. I know they do. I'm not going to do anything about that. I just wish that it was, it's going to be a safer operation in the future. Overall, I think these things are good for the community. They're good for the local economy. They create jobs. That's what a town like Connel needs. But they need to be done right in order to be a net benefit to the local community and not a net negative. And I trust that my elected officials will ensure that that happens. Thank you.
Real quick, have you comment or contacted Public Works regarding these concerns?
I did earlier this spring, and you know, things get busy in the summer, and they kind of, they kind of taper off. You know, one thing I want to touch on what Ramey said as well, is yeah, there was a, the, one of the biggest increases of traffic was the fact that this feed lot was in, was not adequately able to supply water to it. You know, I don't know how many had of cattle out there, but it's not ten thousand. And so I don't know, I'm hearing that things are better out there now, and that there won't, there was three water trucks that went up and down this road of ten-mile round trip from five o'clock in the morning to ten o'clock at night, at nights. It just did not stop. Went by, I probably had a truck go by my house seven days a week every thirty minutes. And, and I don't know if, if anybody lives on gravel roads, I'm sure a lot of you do. It doesn't matter if the wind's blowing or not. I live on the east side of the road, and so the prevailing wind's always at my house. And, but even when it's not blowing, you know, it just kind of sits there. And it's, it's not pleasant. But I think I can fix the dust, but I'd like to make it a little safer. And I think the county can help me out with that.
I will, we will definitely forward this information on regarding the intersection. But I would also recommend that you reach out to them. Just get back on their radar. For all I know, they've got ideas. It's, Public Works is a fabulous agency in this county. It's amazing what they do with the resources they have. But, but yeah, definitely reach out to them as well. And just because anytime we have traffic or safety concerns, we want to make sure that Public Works is aware of that, because they're the best ones that are going to be able to potentially address it. So, so thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Sir, could you spell your last name for me?
Heinen, H-E-I-N-E-N.
Thank you.
Any more negative comments? Any neutral comments, comments on the project at all? Go ahead.
Hi, Jim Coleman. Address is 74 Willis Street in Richland, Washington. I'm an environmental health specialist from the Benton Franklin Health District. And unfortunately, my supervisor, who would ordinarily speak at a meeting like this, is, unfortunately, he's no longer at the Health District. So, and I hadn't really planned to say anything tonight, but Melinda had some questions. I thought I would just give you a little bit of my insight, and then if you had any questions, you could ask me. But yes, we did review the SEPA. We did have some concerns with it as a result. And ecology and our organization kind of work together. So we both looked at it, both had similar questions. We came what, came up with sort of questions that we had for them. Can you elaborate on this and this? And so then they, then they submitted a formalized nutrient management plan, which we reviewed again. And, you know, more details were in that, so it got better in terms of managing the nutrients. And then there were some, some details that we were still requesting. And at the last I know about, that we still had a few unanswered questions, but they may have, they may have directly contacted ecologies. And since my supervisor just recently left, I might have been sort of out of the loop on those last couple of things. But we still had some current concerns about stormwater, or just sort of drainage off of the property, and, you know, what they were going to do to mitigate that. And so those are some things I thought I'd bring up. And then just kind of, in a general sense, part, part of my jobs is, for one, I deal with solid waste. And at a feed lot, there is solid waste generated if it's utilized, if the manure is utilized, then it's not solid waste. But it does accumulate. And so it is something similar to what I would permit. However, in a lot of ag situations, it falls under sort of the guidance of ag or the Conservation District. And so they kind of help them with that. But just in general, I think confined, large confined animal operations have a tendency to concentrate nutrients. And I know you can mitigate it, but I still think there's an issue. And so along with my permitting solid waste facilities, I also inspect community water systems. So I know a lot of people have talked about the community in here. But when I go out and I inspect these community water systems, so these are, these are wells that are providing usually several farms or several farmhouse's water. And they're considered a community system, and they, because they're a community system and serve multiple people, they need to provide insurance that the water is safe to drink. And one of our biggest issues in Franklin County are nitrate levels in the drinking water. It's very high. And so that's a concern of mine. And things like cow manure, increased nutrient load, increased nitrate, and those sorts of things. So there's my concern. You know, we're going to impact nitrate level in groundwater could increase. If you increase the nitrate in the drinking water, then the drinking water is somewhat unsafe to drink. And that impacts our community as well. And then the other thing, because I've been in solid waste, I know what drives, kind of what drives solid waste is the price of gas. And so if you have to haul manure, you know, ten miles, you're going to pay ten times as much as only having to drive it a mile away. So that inherent cost is a driver. And so a lot of, when you have a large operation like this, it focuses the nutrients, because it's expensive to say, take the manure to a farmer ten miles or fifty miles away, when you can just take it five miles away. So it tends to encourage accumulation of nutrients. I'll just say that. And so, and I think accumulation of nutrients in our environment is substantial. I see things like there's been a large increase in algal toxins in our waters. And like I say, increases in nitrate in our drinking water. And so all these things, I think are, are or could be influenced by a large operation like that. And I think I'll just leave it at that. And Melinda, if you had any questions? So ecology is still reviewing this. I can't speak for ecology. I don't think there's a representative from ecology here. But I think where this is headed is ecology is requiring them to get a large, a confined animal, large animal permit. And so they will need to meet the specifications in that permit.
Just as an addition to some of those, our clarification, we will, because of the nature of the comments that were made by ecology, and we will probably, you know, I will, basically, I need to wait, because I know the board's going to ask me, well, what's ecology? So I have to have that answer. But, you know, like I said, so staff will make sure that the Health District and the ecology, that they've met or provided the plans that, before we take it to the board. I mean, that's just a, on this one, and I don't know if we're going to have to start doing these more because of the environment that we're in nowadays. But, you know, listening to the concerns and stuff, I think, I think it would be prudent that, you know, we basically get a sign off from the Health District, just two agencies that complained, before we take it to the board. So it's in, it's one of these situations where they're working, they're currently working on getting everything cleared up, correct? That's, that's been my understanding. And then, you know, once those agencies are satisfied, then we can start, we can move it to the board.
Well, you also have the approval from the Conservation District. Wasn't that something that was mentioned in the staff report?
It's, that's the odor and fly plan. Or, I'll talk with Conservation as to how they want to approach it. I mean, like I said, they, they didn't comment on it. So, that usually tells us their level of concern. But-
But will you have that before you take it to the board as well?
I'll have to check. Because, again, I've got to make sure that I'm treating this application similar to the other applications that are similar to this. And I got to make sure that I'm not holding them to different standards and things like that. So the reason I say that is, again, EIS was not required on the last two feed lots. And we also, it was a condition that they will do that. I will communicate with the Conservation District to make sure that they are abiding by it, or that they have one accepted. But it's not unusual for that to be worked out again, because those are elements that are outside of Franklin County, the jurisdiction purview. I wouldn't know if that plan is good or not, but I can go to Conservation and have them do it. But at the same time, what we're doing here is a permission to proceed, not, not necessarily going over every nut and bolt of the application.
That's it?
Any neutral testimony? Okay. We're done with the public testimony. Is there any email or call-in testimony?
Uh, no.
Good. Does staff have any final comments?
No, I think I kind of just made my final comments just before that. So unless there's questions or anything.
Is there any clarification of public statements needed by anyone from the audience? The public testimony, oh, get with it, Tony.
Thank you. Tony Meacham, I'm at 1420 Scootney Road, Connel, Washington. Not only am I a cattle rancher, fifth generation, but I'm also an ag attorney. And I was brought in in August to help address some of the concerns we've heard about today. So for clarification, I just want to bring up, there seems to be a bit of a miscommunication here on who's got jurisdiction over what. And I just want to make sure everybody understands that this process is the first step. As we move forward, as we've heard from Mr. Broughton, they'll be, the next step is what we consider a CAFO, a Contained Animal Feeding Operation Permit. The jurisdiction, and who oversees that, is DOE and the Washington Department of Agriculture. So when we're talking about our nutrient management plan, when we're talking about our odor, our dust control, things of that nature, those are under the jurisdiction of those agencies, not this one. So as we're moving forward, alls we're asking from this agency is permission to keep going. And as we heard about from Mr. Davis, this project is huge for Franklin County. We think it's the right thing for Franklin County, and it is a net benefit. So just for clarification purposes, I just wanted everybody to understand how we proceed forward, and that this is just the first step. And as we move forward, it does take time, it takes money, it takes lots of investment from the Davises, from their staff, from their team. And we're going to continue to do these things. We're going to continue to mitigate the concerns. That's why I was brought on board, to help mitigate concerns. And we're going to continue to make this a positive for Franklin County. So again, we're simply asking for permission to move forward. We're going to continue to work with the Health District, with Department of Ecology, with the Conservation District, and with the Washington Department of Agriculture, who oversees CAFOs. Thank you.
Anybody else? The public testimony portion of public hearing CUP 2022-4, SEPA 2022-16 is closed. Is there any discussion among the planning commission prior to entertaining a motion?
I just wanted to make a comment that even though, you know, I ask questions, I think that is, what a lot of people don't understand is that, that's what I feel is my responsibility as being a planning commissioner, is to ask questions and to get it out there for discussion, so that everybody understands what the process is. And, you know, that we're not just rubber-stamping everything, and that everybody does, is clear that, you know, we have a concern for not only having these businesses and industries, and especially since we're such an ag community. And, you know, as, as most of you know, I'm married to a farmer, and, you know, I'm well aware of the challenges, particularly in this, you know, the way things are nowadays for farmers and ranchers. But also that, that things are done right. And, you know, all our i's are dotted and t's are crossed. So I, to just dispel that notion that the reason that I ask questions is because I'm either, you know, opposed or, or something to this, that's not the case at all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
So kind of what, to what Melinda was saying, making sure it's done right. They can agree to whatever, like a lot of businesses do. But how's the enforcement work? I mean, some of the concerns here as far as the dust and, you know, the, they can agree to the plan now, that doesn't mean they're going to live with it. Who enforces that? Is it complaint-driven? Is it?
Yes.
So if there's concerns, how do they know who to bring it to? If all these agencies have different jurisdictions over everything like that?
Well, generally speaking, the process is, I get a phone call, somebody reports something. If it's something that's under my purview, that I have the authority to enforce, then my department handles it. If, if it's a joint effort, then my department, as well as what other agency, has purview. Like, say there's multiple things going on, right? Some things I have purview over, some things the Health District, some, you know, whoever. Then I bring those people on. Also, folks will report directly to those agencies as well, independent of me. And then if that happens, they'll contact me. The agency will notify me, hey, we got this complaint. These things are our thing, but we think these things might be your thing. And then, again, it's a coordinated effort. If, if it's purely my thing, and they contact the state, then again, the state ecology or whoever will notify me and go, hey, this is going on, we got this report. It's not, not in our stuff. Is it in your stuff? And then we go from there. So- not in our stuff. Is it in your stuff? And then we go from there. So it's, it's enforcement's almost, except for on, there's a few things that generally are not, but it's, it's quite often that, especially with large operations, um, it's, it's gonna always be a joint effort, but it depends on what the issue is. And then, and then you start running into thresholds. So sometimes there's thresholds that as long as they're not breaking a threshold, like noise, say, you know, if somebody's making no more than 65 decibels of noise, um, and that noise is still annoying you, I unfortunately can't do anything about it until they hit 65 or 66 decibels, or actually over 65, when on your property. In some jurisdictions, it's at the property line. But yeah, so I mean, there's, but unfor, you know, I wish I could just give a simple answer with code enforcement, but unfortunately, there's all these dynamics involved on the specifics, but yeah.
I just wanted to clarify for the concerns that we're giving, that, that this is complaint-driven.
And-
So if there's issues out there, it's, it's kind of up to neighbors and people like that to help enforce.
Now, we do-
It's being ran right.
Like when we go out to put out our signs and stuff, we look, and if we see imminent risk of life or safety-
Sure.
Um, then we will act independent of, um, a complaint, you know. But at the same time, no, we do not drive around the county looking for code complaints. We just, we just don't have the resources for that. Um, so, but, report-driven or imminent risk to health or safety, um, we will, we, we act on those.
Got a follow-up question on the code enforcement. You know, you mentioned that if it's not under the purview of your department, your code enforcement department, that it would be something that might be another agency. So would the complainant contact you first, and you would forward that on to the, because how does the average citizen?
No, that's, that's what I'm saying. They'll either contact me, I listen to the complaint. Complaints do need to be done on a official code complaint form. You can't just pick up the phone and call me and complain. I have to have it on the form because that's what justifies my staff spending the time. It's, it's basically, I gotta track what I'm doing and why my staff's doing whatever it's doing. Um, so that form, and then it makes a, a record. Once that happens, legal things start happening. So once I get that, then, then I review the complaint. If it's, um, like I said, purely within my purview, then we'd deal with it. Um, and the process is, you know, we, we always try to first work with the person, because we find that code enforcement, lack of compliance with code enforcement tends to be through ignorance of the law. They don't know they're breaking the law. Um, and, but we move forward, we, we notify them, hey, you haven't, we go out and do a site visit. We notify them that you're, you're in violation. Um, if, if it's something outside of our purview, then I contact the agencies. No, I don't just say, call Ecology. I have the connections. I know who to talk to. So when there's a code issue or an agency compliance issue, that's an issue for Franklin County as well. It's not just because, you know, oops, sorry, man. No. Uh, we coordinate a response with the agencies, but that's part of what I'm doing, and why I need that in writing as well, is because then I take that form, I forward that on to those agencies as well, so they can review, and, and we can together mitigate the situation. And if we get no compliance, eventually it goes to the prosecuting attorney, and there's literally a trial, and things start going into actually can move into criminal as opposed to civil. So, uh, blatant disregard for county codes can elevate to a criminal misdemeanor, but still criminal complaint. Um, and you can be fined up to $1,000. Wait. No, that's not here. That was somewhere else. Um, you can get fined per day, per incident. So, um, yeah, it's best to comply. Because then you can get expensive real fast if you don't.
Oh, Derek, uh, the staff report said Public Works has determined that the proposed use would not have a significant impact on the county road system, and a gentleman here and I brought traffic concerns. So does he need to follow up with you, or do you, will you talk with Public Works?
Well, like I said, yeah, I, I suggest that he does as well.
Okay.
But I will also do it. Um, anytime, anytime I get brought a, uh, issue, especially a safety concern, I always forward that on to Public Works.
Any more questions or discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Staff does recommend approval based on, on, um, six findings of fact and 10 conditions of approval that are detailed in the staff report. So that's our recommended motion.
I move that the Franklin County Planning Commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners adopt the six findings of fact and 10 conditions of approval detailed in the staff report and approve case file CUP 2022-04 slash SEPA 2022-16.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Harpster and seconded by Commissioner Neiften, that we forward to Board of Commissioners a recommendation of approval for CUP 2022-4, SEPA 2022-16, with the six adopted findings of fact and 10 conditions of approval. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote, please.
Mike Crowley?
Yes.
Melinda Didier?
Abstain.
Alayden Lowe?
Yes.
Stacy Neiften?
Yes.
Peter Harpster?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion has been, has been passed.
Motion has been approved. We're done.
Well, with the hearing.
Yeah.
Now, now it's close, huh, ain't it?
Two meetings in a row, you get to vote. Two meetings in a row, you get to vote.
There was one prior to the earlier.
I've never seen it.
Oh, yeah. No, this is a big deal. This is a big deal.
We all get, I was gonna say, no, we all get big crowds.
Oh, well, I see.
I don't think that about you, just so you know. I didn't think that you're-
Mike.
I'm used to people asking why I should get them on the record. Remember who I work for.
I'm done. How about you?
Mr. Pack, you always-
We got more to do, I think.
No, I don't, I don't. I just want to, I don't, I don't.